Good evening. I would like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate your attendance at our meetings always. So if you would please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our deputy city manager is acting as our city clerk tonight, so thank you for being here with the acting clerk. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Snell.
Present.
Councillor Ohm.
Here.
Councillor Hultein.
Present.
Councillor Weber.
Here.
Councillor Stites.
Here.
Councillor Hoppe.
Present.
Councillor Larson.
Here.
And Councillor Dozeman.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum?
Thank you. Councillors, in your packet, we have meetings for the August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four study session notes. Are there any corrections or notations to be made in the notes? Seeing none, we will let those stand as presented with our thanks to the clerk. Are there any changes to be requested in the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move with the agenda as presented. We have a couple of proclamations today, so I will see you at the podium. I would like to ask James Gallardo, Lorena Vazquez, and Adrian Hernandez with the city of Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation to join me at the podium. This is a proclamation in support of National, excuse me, National Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas Hispanic Americans have contributed greatly to our nation in all areas, including science, art, music, sports, education, and public service, and have bravely served their country in large numbers in times of peace, war, and in every way in our nation's history. And whereas, in nineteen sixty-eight, Congress authorized President Lyndon B. Johnson to proclaim National Hispanic American Heritage Week, and this observance was expanded in nineteen eighty-eight to a month-long celebration. And whereas, during this month, Americans celebrate the traditions, ancestry, and unique experiences of those who trace their family background to Spain and Latin American countries. And whereas, twenty-one percent of Wheat Ridge residents identify as Hispanic or Latino. And whereas, throughout our history, Hispanic Americans have enriched the American way of life, and we recognize the millions of Hispanic Americans whose love of family, hard work, and community help unite us as a nation. And whereas, accomplishments made by Hispanic Americans serve as an inspiration to all who seek freedom, opportunity, and a new beginning for themselves and their children. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, and the Wheat Ridge City Council wish to recognize September fifteenth to October fifteenth as National Hispanic Heritage Month and encourage residents of Wheat Ridge to celebrate the cultural, professional, educational, and civic contributions of our Hispanic community. Thank you. And I want to give this to you.
Thank you.
And would you like to say a few words?
I'm Lorena Vazquez, and I am a recreation specialist over at the Rec Center, and I just wanted to say I'm very honored for being here today. Thank you.
My name is Adrian Hernandez. I am Park of Parks and Recreation. I work and help clean up and maintain parks around the city. I just want to say thank you for the eight years working here and for the many opportunities I was able to get being here, and I cannot describe how much it changed my life, good for the better. Thank you.
James Gallardo, graphic designer here, works for Parks and Rec and marketing, and I've been working about three, four years, been a member of the Wheat Ridge residents for about twenty-something years. So it's good to be part of this. I love to see the council and everyone work so progressively into honor and recognition, and it means a lot to us. It means lots to communities, so.
All right. Thank you. Salute. Salute. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you all coming up. Thanks so much. All right. And I would like, for our next presentation, to invite Councillor Dozeman, Leah Dozeman, up to make some announcements.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all of my colleagues on City Council, city staff, and members of the public that are here this evening. I have had the honor of being on the Carnation Festival Board since two thousand and fifteen, and I have chaired the Carnation Festival Parade for the last eight years. And it's a tradition to thank not only the board and committee members, but also the city and carry on a longstanding tradition of giving the city of Wheat Ridge a plate. So the city of Wheat Ridge was incorporated in August nineteen sixty-nine, and the Carnation Festival is an annual festival that has around thirty thousand attendees over a three-day period of time. We have the spaghetti dinner, we've had the Zopee Family Circus, fireworks, live music, beer gardens, that help support many of our local service organizations, and it's a nod to our heritage of being the carnation capital of the world when we were a rural community. So this year, we celebrated our fifty-fifth annual Carnation Festival, and it is to many thanks for the board members, particularly Joe Demott, who has chaired the festival for now thirteen, this was his thirteenth year. We have many longstanding residents and community members that contribute hundreds of hours each and every year, and it's incredible to see what goes on behind the scenes to put on an event to welcome that many people into Wheat Ridge each and every year. We have wonderful support from our local businesses, including Personal Achievement Martial Arts, Inner Mountain Health, Lutheran Hospital as sponsors. They come and participate in the parade, and it's just a wonderful event for the city of Wheat Ridge, and we welcome a lot of local residents each and every year. And that would not be possible without the city of Wheat Ridge and their partnership and their contribution to the festival, not only financially, but also the weekend and the week of. So the city provides Wheat Ridge Police Department, Parks and Rec, Public Works, that help with all of the infrastructure, security, and everything from permitting to cleaning up the parks and everything in between, and it would not be possible without that partnership. So I would just like to thank everyone, my colleagues and city staff, in supporting the Carnation Festival and coming out and having a good time, and this is your fifty-fifth minus COVID plate. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. We are now at our public's right to speak. This is an opportunity for members of the public to come forward to speak on items that are not on the agenda for three minutes to address the council. We will also take comment tonight on our special study session at this time. So if there is an item on the special study session that a speaker would like to speak on, we will take that. And I have a couple of speakers, I believe, here. Joining us online is, and when I call your name, if you'd please unmute yourself and introduce yourself, Lindsey Rasmussen. Are you with us, Lindsey?
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can. Please go ahead.
Great. Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Lindsey Rasmussen, and I serve as the lead campaign consultant with Citizens for Jeffco's Future, which is a committee that's dedicated to supporting Jefferson County's ballot measure one A, which will be on the ballot this November. So as we all know, Jefferson County is facing some critical funding challenges, and measure one A is a simple common sense solution. The measure asks voters if the county can retain and spend the full revenue that it already collects without raising taxes or the mill levy rate. Essentially, it allows the county to remove the arbitrary cap that is imposed by the state's taxpayer bill of rights, also commonly referred to as TABR. The money will be used in two key areas, transportation and infrastructure, and public safety. Without this measure, Jeffco will face a twenty million dollar budget cut next year. Over the past few years, we've already seen pretty significant cuts, specifically sixteen point one million in two thousand and twenty and eight point seven million in two thousand and twenty-one, which have only worsened the backlog of critical projects like road maintenance. The county simply can't keep up with its growing infrastructure needs and essential services under the current revenue cap. So if passed, measure one A will allow Jeffco to function like most other Colorado counties that have already approved similar measures. In fact, Jeffco is one of two counties in Colorado that has not approved a measure of this kind. Um, really emphasize is that this is not a tax increase. We're simply asking voters to allow the county to keep the revenue that it's already collected. Currently, excess revenues are refunded back to taxpayers in small amounts, about twenty-two dollars per resident annually. If approved, those funds, which will be about thirty point five million dollars next year, would instead be invested back into our community's infrastructure and safety services. Though the council has a, the Wheat Ridge Council has a resolution, basically asking y'all to support this measure, and I ask that you pass this resolution and support this critical measure that will not only bring reprieve to Jefferson County's budget, but of course Wheat Ridge as one of the cities right in the heart of the county.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you joining us tonight. I have one person signed up to speak in our study session. It's Russell. If you'd please come to the podium and give us your first name and your last name, and tell us whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge, and then you'll have three minutes to address the council on the study session night.
My name is Russell Silman. I live in Wheat Ridge. I work at Sub and Sam's Sinclair Convenience Store located nine four and nine one West Forty-Fourth Avenue. And what we're asking the city council to do is to change the city code on tobacco sales within a thousand feet of a youth-organized facility slightly to achieve the same results, but just in a longer period of time, because we think that the current code will drastically, drastically negatively affect current people, current owners of the establishment. So we could still achieve the same results, but without any devastating effects to the business owners. And thank you very much for our opportunity to speak with the council and bring this matter up also. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us tonight. That concludes all of the speakers. I have signed up to speak tonight under public comment. We will now go to agenda item number one. Councillor Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to present the consent agenda, item one A, motion to award the two thousand and twenty-four striping and pavement marking project base bid and bid alternate one to Colorado Barricade Company of Denver, Colorado, and approve subsequent payments in the amount of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars, with a contingency amount of eleven thousand, nine hundred dollars, for a total not to exceed the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Item one B, motion to award the two thousand and twenty-four concrete repairs ADA pedestrian ramps project base bid and bid alternate one to Majestic Concrete Contractors, Inc. of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, and approve a contract in the amount of five hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and four dollars, sixty cents, with a contingency amount of fifty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, forty-six cents, for a total not to exceed the amount of six hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and six cents. Item one C, motion to approve the purchase and payment of one two thousand and twenty-four vehicle replacement and the purchase and payment for the installation of lighting and auxiliary and communications equipment in a total amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars. Item one D, motion to approve the purchase and payment to Slosser Signs, Inc., for services to complete design and installation of the recreation sign project for a total not to exceed the amount of ninety-two thousand, three hundred and three dollars, fifty-eight cents, with a project contingency not to exceed six thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Thank you. This is our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items one A through one D?
I move to approve consent agenda items one A through one D.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Would the acting clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. The motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to agenda item number two. Councillor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill eighteen, two thousand and twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the issuance by the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, of its sales and use tax revenue, refunding and improvement bonds, series two thousand and twenty-four, and providing other details in connection therewith. At issue, at the regular general election held on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, the electorate of the city approved ballot question two J, which extended the one-half of one percent sales and use tax levied by the city, and authorized the issuance of debt to finance city investment and capital improvement projects. Sales and use tax revenue bonds will be issued to finance the city investments, which requires approval of an ordinance by city council. A change was made to the bond ordinance following first reading and is reflected in the first attachment. In summary, after additional financial analysis, it was determined it is prudent for the city to refund, include approximately five million of the two thousand and seventeen bond debt in this new issuance, defusing the remaining two thousand and seventeen debt with approximately seven point three million of the two E fund balance.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi-judicial. It is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on the side?
We do. Thank you, Mayor. I'll start out and turn it over to our guest here in a second. As was noted in the issue statement by Councilmember Dozeman, we have in front of you this evening an ordinance to authorize the city to issue up to seventy million dollars, seventy-five million dollars in bonds to invest in city infrastructure, as was approved by close to seventy percent of Wheat Ridge voters in November of twenty-three. Those projects will include sidewalk, bike lanes, street improvements on primary street corridors, corridors such as Thirty-second Avenue, Thirty-eighth Avenue, Forty-Fourth Avenue, Youngfield Street, filling sidewalk gaps and other sidewalk repair and replacement with an emphasis on major pedestrian corridors and routes to schools, drainage and floodplain infrastructure improvements at priority locations in the city. IRS rules require that eighty-five percent of our bond proceeds from taxes except bonds must be spent within a three-year period. Because of this, we will plan to issue at least two tranches of bonds so that we have staff capacity to complete the projects within this timeframe. The first issuance we're looking at will generate approximately thirty-two point four million in project funds to complete the projects that are listed in attachment six in your agenda packet. Maria is here this evening if you have any further questions on those specific projects. We're shooting for a bond closing by the end of October this year, which we hope will take advantage of a predicted interest rate reduction in the next several weeks. To help summarize the bond documents in front of you this evening, we do have some guests here this evening, which we will talk about the logistics and the next steps of this bond issuance. First of all, we have with us our bond counsel with Butler Snow, Kim Crawford, who is working with the city to ensure that we comply with all IRS and other regulations, and then our bond underwriter, Nate Eckloff, who is working with the city to help us package the best bond deal as possible. So with that, I want to invite Kim Crawford up again with Butler Snow, and she will provide a high-level summary of the legal rules and regulations that we are following with this ordinance. Kim?
Hi, thank you. Kim Crawford with Butler Snow. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and always a pleasure to work with the city. We assisted with your two thousand and sixteen election and again with your election last year. So this ordinance really, and the ballot question in twenty-three, really just extended the tax that had already been approved by the voters in sixteen, so you're extending that tax. You're allowing it to pay the old bonds, which are the seventeen bonds, and the new bonds. This ordinance allows you to do that. It authorizes a project in the amount of not to exceed seventy-five million, and then with the max annual and that's total repayment cost of what was approved in the ballot question. However, you can do anything less than that. And as you were told, the IRS requires that you have a reasonable expectation to spend eighty-five percent of the proceeds within three years, so you're going to be doing this in two different, what they call tranches. So you'll issue some now and some, you know, several years from now. This resolution also allows you the authority to refund any or all of the two thousand and seventeen bonds, and the changes to the parameters that were discussed, that were the changes in the packet for tonight, give you that flexibility to refund all of them if you should so choose, and that will kind of be based on market conditions at the time of the sale. So Nate can speak more about that. So the sales tax ordinance is essentially what you approved in two thousand and seventeen when you issued those bonds. You're pledging one percent of your sales tax revenue plus the point five percent that was approved by the voters in seventeen, in sixteen. That will expire when those bonds are paid off, that amount will. So those are the amounts that you're going to be pledging to the repayment of those bonds. You are supposed to, you can't issue additional bonds unless you meet the covenant, rate covenant test, which is another change that was made in your packet. Last time in two thousand and seventeen, the bond issue said that you couldn't issue additional bonds unless your sales tax coverage was two hundred percent, which meant that you would have two times coverage. You could pay, your sales tax revenue was sufficient to pay your debt service twice, and now it went down to a hundred and seventy-five percent, which is a little bit more flexible for the city. Think, I mean, I think that's really essentially all of the high-level points of this. The bond ordinance approves the form of certain agreements. The paying agent agreement, which is with BOK Financial, they were your paying agent for your last bond issue. It approves the form of an escrow agreement, which you would need to do a refunding because you have to put that money into an escrow bank because it's going to be pledged to pay your old bonds back, and you can't use that for anything else. It approves the form of a bond purchase agreement, which was on file with the city as well, and the form of a preliminary official statement. And that document is a really long document that is also on file, and you're welcome to read if you'd like. It contains all of the information that an investor would want to know in order to make an informed investment decision to buy your bonds. So it has a lot of stuff about, you know, who you are, what you do, what your sales tax coverage is, what you're going to do with this, who you all are, and your staff, and who's running your city essentially. So that information, it's a, it's a really interesting document if you wanted to take a quick look at that. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions. There's a lot more. As you know, it's like a seventy, no, not quite seventy page. It's a fifty-page document, forty-page document. And a lot of it, again, deals with how your bonds are paid and structured, and who pays what, when, and stuff like that, but those are the biggest detail.
Nate, do you want to present first before we take questions? You might, you might be able to answer any questions that they may have before they...
Hello again, everyone. My name is Nate Eckloff, Managing Director with Piper Sandler. I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Wheat Ridge for the sale of your upcoming sale, I should save your sales and use tax bonds, should you approve it this evening. So very quickly, I was just going to talk about the size of the two issues, the interest rate real quickly, and then talk about the timetable. It sounds like a lot, but I'll make it very quick. To accommodate the issuance of the new money, we are refunding a portion of the existing bonds from two thousand and seventeen, and a little less than five million as of today anyway, about four million, eight fifty-five. The interest rate on those old bonds was a three ninety-two, three point nine two percent. We're looking at the refunding to have a net interest cost of about three twenty, three point two, so it's a slightly lower interest rate. There's a slight savings of not quite a hundred thousand dollars in today's market to refinance those earlier bonds. So it accomplishes two things. It creates a very, I'll say, small savings on behalf of the city, but then it also allows the new money issue to go forward. And then for the new money issue, we're looking at roughly thirty million dollar transaction this time around. The, we're looking at a true interest cost of about a three point seven one percent. So in today's market, those bonds will go out to two thousand and forty-three. So for the twenty-year period of time, you're basically being able to issue bonds at four percent or less, so very good in today's market. We're not looking to price these bonds for a couple of weeks yet. We have to finish the rating process, as well as get the offering document into the public. We're expecting, I think the market's baked in. I was talking to Councilmember Larson before the meeting. Markets basically baked in some interest rate reduction. We're expecting rates hopefully to go down just a bit more between now and when you price the bonds, so we'll cross our fingers on that, but very attractive rate, given that rates have come down over the course of this last year. Timing-wise, we're expecting, assuming you approve this this evening, we would have a call with the rating agencies on the eighteenth of September. We would look to receive a rating by the twenty-seventh of September, and hopefully then price the bonds about a week to ten days thereafter and be able to close the transaction before the end of October. That's sort of the high level of the timing at this juncture. So do any... So do any questions either for him or myself?
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this, so I'll go directly to council. Do we have any questions for Ms. Crawford or Mr. Eckloff? Uh, Councilor Holtein?
Thank you. This is actually a question for staff, sorry, our experts. Given the IRS requirements for the spend-down time period, what are the city's plans around making sure that we've got adequate staffing in order to get the projects, you know, engineered and planned and through? Is this gonna, does this require additional staffing? Is that something that we're looking at? Because I know that the last bonds were quite a strain on staff at times.
Yeah. And we're still wrapping up those bonds. 2E, 2E and the urban renewal bonds, which were primarily infrastructure projects. Maria and I are, we're talking about that, and we are looking at hiring additional project manager for the CIAP projects, and we can use the bond funds for that. I believe it's called, what was that, 5%? Working, the working capital portion, you could use up to 5% of the bonds for that. So we're looking at hiring at least one capital projects manager to help with those projects.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Okay, before I close the public hearing and ask for a vote, are there any other questions from council? Hearing nine, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Councilor Dozeman, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill 182024, An Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance by the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado of Its Sales and Use Tax Revenue Refunding and Improvement Bonds Series 2024 and Providing Other Details in Connection Therewith on second reading and then it takes effect immediately.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Dozeman, or Councilor Holtein, excuse me. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. We will now go to agenda item number three. Councilor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 19-2024, No Ordinance Amending Title 19, Article 4, The Wheat Ridge Code of Law Concerning Disposition of Lost or Abandoned Property. At issue, discrepancy exists between Code Sections 19-80 and 19-77 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the disposition of lost or abandoned property. To correct that discrepancy, the Wheat Ridge Police Department is requesting that Code Section 19-80 be amended to render consistent with Code Section 19-77 and standard operating procedures of the police department.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi-judicial, but it is a public hearing, and I'm going to open the public hearing right now. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. This is a very simple cleanup, but Mr. Dahl can give a little bit more context to it.
Mr. Dahl?
Thank you very much. This, that's a request of the police department. There are two sections, there's actual, actually several sections dealing with lost or abandoned property, and that's consistent for all cities and counties in the state. We often end up with, the government ends up with, property that's lost or abandoned, especially police departments that seize property or property comes into their possession in connection with some kind of event and is never claimed. And you've probably understood that that's often auctioned or it's donated. Police departments use it in various ways and try to make sure there's a good use for that property. We have code sections that govern how that property is to be converted to cash or otherwise dealt with, because in the initial event, it's not the city's property. So how do you dispose a property that you technically don't own? And that's what these code sections do, and all cities have a form of them. Two of the code sections talk about timeframes. One of them says, okay, we, if we can give you a notice, a written notice, and if 30 days goes by and you haven't claimed the property, if we've got a last known address kind of thing from the police department, we can sell it. The code section we're amending says, okay, that or whichever period's longer, and you'll notice it's really in the chief's memo on the second page where he says, this wording implies that regardless of whether or not the department mails a notice, they've got to hold on to the property for 60 days. And their protocol really is, they mail the notice, they wait the 30 days, they dispose of it. And that's important because the storage space becomes a real issue for abandoned property in any city, especially here. So I realize there's not much of a change. We're just deleting the words, whichever is the longer period, but in doing that, it'll harmonize the code sections and make sure the department can continue with its standard protocol, which is to send a notice, and if they don't hear anything back in 30 days, they can dispose. That's all.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Dahl. I have no one signed up from the public to speak on this, so I'll open it up to questions from council. Staff on this item, Councilor Hoppe?
Thank you. And Mr. Goff, can you, we have a citizen group that looks over the, looks over the spending of this, is that true? Is that the same group?
That's the, on the forfeitures and seizures.
Yeah.
Yeah, program. I think the mayor, or the mayor, are you on that? Or the city treasurer's on that? Police chief? Yeah, this is different.
Okay.
This is abandoned property. That's, forfeitures and seizures are from criminal activity where we retain money or goods that are valuable.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Councilor Ohm, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 19-2024, An Ordinance Amending Title 19, Article 4, The Wheat Ridge Code of Law Concerning Disposition of Lost or Abandoned Property and That It Take Effect 15 Days After Final Publication.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protim Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the deputy clerk please, or the acting clerk, please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. We will now go to agenda item number four. Mayor Protim Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve a professional services agreement with Olson in an amount not to exceed $1,067,000 to provide design, environmental, and right-of-way services for the Wadsworth Path Project. At issue in 2022, the city was awarded a $7.5 million grant through the Denver Regional Council of Government's Transportation Improvement Program to construct a multi-use path along the west side of the Wadsworth Boulevard between 32nd Avenue and 35th Avenue. The Public Works Department solicited and evaluated proposals from five firms. Staff is recommending that the city enter into a contract with Olson for the design, environmental, and right-of-way phases of the project. The fee amount was negotiated with Olson and includes an approximate 3% contingency amount to address minor changes that may arise during the design process.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Nothing else, really. Just that we're excited to get this project started, happy to get a very large grant to make this a very good, nice project. So Maria is here if you have any other questions.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't have any members of the public signed up to speak on this, so I will go to questions from council. Any discussion on this item? Councilor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. And the only question I have is, is there a sort of a rough timeline for when this thing would begin and end? I know that people are anxious to get Wadsworth back to where it ought to be, and if this is going to further disrupt that, we should know.
Certainly, I can take that, Councilmember Larson. Our intent is to kick off design probably within the next week or so, if this is successful this evening. And that's where, the design would take the rest of, probably into the spring of 2025, but we would hope that, the intent would be is that by late summer next year, we'd be issuing the construction bids, and so probably starting late fall, or fall to winter of next year, and completing then probably in the spring of 2026.
Additional questions of staff on this item? Seeing none, Mayor Protim Stites, may I have a motion on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve a professional services agreement with Olson in the amount not to exceed $1,067,000 to provide design, environmental, and right-of-way services for the Wadsworth Path Project.
Second.
Oh, I guess Councilor Hoppe got the second on that one. She's pretty good at that. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion on the motion? Councilor Holtein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, so thank you, Councilor Larson, for asking the question I would have asked. Just really excited to see this moving forward. And again, I want to recognize how successful the city's been getting the competitive dollars for investments like this regionally. We do an extraordinary job of putting forward good projects. They're scored based on a lot of things, including the city's ability to provide its own funding, but also community input and the process that these projects come around. But also, impact is part of it. So we're, this is a great project, and I just personally, I'm really excited because it sounds like it is going to be completed, and I will be able to ride my bike here instead of having to go west up through Lutheran to get to city council on Monday night. So I am really looking forward to in 2026, riding my bike all the way down Wadsworth to safely get to city hall. So it's a great project, and I will look forward to it completing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. I am, many, many times I have driven by that, and I've seen people walking on the dirt and trying to get through, and I am really proud that our city is going forward with putting in the sidewalk, and we have amazing partners that staff has worked with to get this started, and looking very forward to seeing some progress and to the completion date. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In November, I've been sitting at this dais for nine years. Two years prior to that, Councilmember Tim Fitzgerald, God rest his soul, started the fight for this piece of sidewalk. And once he could no longer join us on the dais, I took up the, bringing it up every time we had budget season. And I know it's expensive. It's a pricey piece of land. It's difficult. It has a lot of trickery to it. But I am just so proud of us, and I know that Tim would be so happy to have this done.
Thank you, Councilor. Appreciate that. Any additional comments on that? So seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. That, pardon me. That concludes our agenda items. We will now go to the next item, which if my memory serves right, the city managers' matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, we received our ballot numbers for our two ballot questions from the counties. So the charter cleanup ballots number will be 2B, and the height question to amend the city charter for the Lutheran campus will be 2C. So 2B and 2C this year. That's it.
Thank you very much. City attorneys' matters, Mr. Dahl?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We will go with elected officials' matters, and start with Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Talk about a day, this past weekend, that I really wanted to clone myself. We had so much going on in Wheat Ridge Saturday, and I couldn't make everything, but I was very, very happy to be involved in a few things that are very important to our community. The Alliance for Collective Action held a farm tour that started off at the Wheat Ridge Center for Music and Arts on Saturday morning. I was very, very honored to be a part of that and share some information about the center, about the kitchen that we are putting together and opening for small business use. But it was just a super impactful event. We welcomed folks from all over. I know Councilor Holtein will speak more about specifics, but I just wanted to say it was truly an honor to be a part of that, and kudos to the entire team for just an amazing job that they did putting that together. So from there, I went to get a tattoo. Jefferson Center for Mental Health held an event called Hope Inc. and partnered with several area tattoo studios, giving semicolon tattoos. I was lucky enough to get on the list to get one and got to spend some time talking with volunteers for Jefferson Center at the tattoo studio while I waited, and also the artists that I spoke to and the folks that were doing my tattoo. And one really impactful thing that I'm continually reminded of is just how widespread and how much suicide affects everyone. And so it's very, very important that we have events like this, that we make it part of our conversation, that we reach out to folks, that we just check in and continue to not be afraid to talk about it because it's important. And I was very glad to be a part of that. Thank you so much to Jefferson Center for doing that and for the studios to partner with them and the volunteers that came out. Apparently, it was a very, very smooth event for everyone involved, so hopefully it can happen again. And then, two more quick things. This Tuesday, tomorrow, is our first meeting of the Idea Committee. Really excited to get that going. We've got some fantastic community members on that committee, so lots coming up. Really, really excited to get that going. And then, I would encourage everyone to mark their calendars for September 22nd, which is a Sunday. Panorama Park Sustainable Neighborhood is holding a community bike ride around District 1, talking about some different sustainability things, the garden there at Panorama Park, and just spending some time rolling around the neighborhood, and then we'll end at Mestizo for some, for some dinner. So get that on your calendars now. I know our calendars are filling up. So starts at 4 o'clock at Panorama Park on the 22nd. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Go to Councilor Holtein.
Yeah, tag team with Councilor Snell. Yeah, I felt like this weekend was just so Wheat Ridge-tastic. I collapsed in bed last night and wasn't sure I was going to be able to get up this morning. So yeah, so on Saturday, there was the Alliance for Collective Action, hosted this urban agriculture tour, and it started and ended in Wheat Ridge and included Happiness Gardens and Roost Farms. And I was, we were fortunate enough that a colleague I met in DC at the National League of Cities Conference, Dr. Dwayne Goldman with USDA. He's the first ever senior advisor on racial equity and justice to the USDA. He came out at our invitation to be part of the event and to really get a sense of the good work that we're doing here and regionally, but a lot of it was really focused on Wheat Ridge. So the tour itself was spectacular. We had a lunch at Happiness Gardens that included the mayor and Councilmember Ohm, and we had 50 people at one long table at Happiness Gardens, and we were served some of the most extraordinary food I think I've ever had in my entire life. That was prepared by Nerissa Rivera, who is the kitchen partner with Jenny, and it was just, every ingredient in every dish had a story of where it came from and how it was carefully tended to and cultivated. And at the end of the tour, I was asking Dr. Goldman about his impressions of Wheat Ridge, having heard about it now for a few years since we met. And his job is to travel across the country and meet with communities, and, you know, since he's been appointed, I don't know how many communities he's been to, but this year he's been to almost 80 communities across the country. And he said without hesitation that Wheat Ridge is in the top five communities across the country that's doing the right things around urban agriculture from a policy and a programming and a partnership standpoint. I mean, he was thoroughly impressed. We sent him back to DC with some requests, and we're hoping that translates to additional funding and investments in the work we're doing here, and hoping that that reaches our disadvantaged producers and that the city continues to be a strong partner in that. So super proud. I won't steal Councilmember Weaver's thunder, but then Dr. Goldman and I did go and attend Dr. Weaver's event. And then we all had dinner at Aguascalante, so he got to just experience all the flavors of Wheat Ridge. But it just was really proud of our community, just who we are as people, but the good work we're doing when it comes through so clearly like that. It just is a moment for all of us to be proud. And then I hosted my block party yesterday in partnership with some of my neighbors. It was our 10th anniversary, and we had about 80 people come, and it was just really exciting. This year, we had a lot of little kids that used to not be a thing at our block party. But what was really encouraging to me is that we had probably a dozen people who it was their first time coming. Many of them had lived in the neighborhood less than a year, and several of them were actually renters. And I know we oftentimes don't always think of our renters as being as engaged civically. And it was just really encouraging to me that, like, just based off of a flyer and then some reminders on the posts in the neighborhood, that they came and met, you know, longstanding neighbors, and I think that's the fabric that makes Wheat Ridge great. And I was just really encouraged that it wasn't, you know, I love, 50 people come every year are beloved to me, but it was just really fun to see the new people. And then lastly, I just want to thank the city for being really responsive today. There was a water main break in our district near Apple Blocker Park, and while it was Wheat Ridge Water District's responsibility, the city showed up as this partner to help get that addressed. And hopefully, apparently that site's been an issue, and hopefully the Water District is able to resolve it this time. So I just want to thank the city for being responsive, and we heard from constituents. So yay, Wheat Ridge!
Thank you. Councilor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. And just two very, very short items here. The first one is, speaking of... speaking of marking your calendar, on September 28th, that's a Saturday. I hope you can join us. For all the folks that live out in our new Northwest side, we are having a little informal neighborhood get acquainted for all of our new neighbors that live in in that part of the city. And it'll be running from about 9 o'clock in the morning till noon on September 28th. Again, that's a Saturday. And then the other thing is to remind folks that September is National Preparedness Month and that there are some things that we can do to basically just be aware of the possibility that things can happen. And one of the things, the first things that you can do to find out some steps you can take and how to start a conversation on preparedness is simply go to, it's called ready.gov, the government website. And you can learn about the type of common hazards, when an emergency strikes, some of the ways you can stay connected with your loved ones. And then some of the other ways you can find more information or register for various places that will provide you notification. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And I just want to thank District 4 Business Pietras Pizzeria for hosting my very rowdy family of about 40 people on Saturday to celebrate many, many birthdays, including my mother's. I still have my bringer of life, which is today, so I want to wish my mom a happy birthday. And then my sister's is actually on 9/11 and that is a day of remembrance for not only the United States and us on the dais, but you know, it's celebrated or remembered all across the country. And so it's a day for our family that we celebrate and also remember. But it sounds like I missed a lot of amazing events on Saturday. And I'm really bummed, but it was really great to connect with my family at one of our local favorite restaurants. And we always go there for lots of family birthdays. So appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a big thank you for all the citizens that came out for the Preparedness Event at the, at Five Fridges Farm this weekend and for Commander Lucas Hunt, who presented a great program as well as Nathan Whittington from the Emergency Services of Jefferson County. And we also had Dr. Reagan Adams from the Colorado Department of Agriculture. And we were all having a discussion about how to evacuate animals in an emergency. And so it was really great to get connected on not only thinking about human preparedness, but also for our four-legged or three-legged or two-legged friends. So thank you, everyone. And thank you especially to the mayor who came out and introduced and represented Wheat Ridge so well as he always does. Really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, thank you, Councilmember Hull team for the invitation for the Happiness Gardens. It was a pretty amazing event. You know, we had basically, it was like a long, very long table with, you know, underneath the shade shelters. And the food was really amazing. Nerissa is a very thoughtful chef as she incorporated different indigenous types of foods and grains and told us about some of these grains are really special, only for special events. I was very honored to be a part of that. And she even told us, you know, that she had made this dessert with squash. And I like squash, but the dessert she made was amazing. I loved it. And I think it was a creme brulee.
Creme brulee.
Yeah. It was really good. And what I liked most about was how enthused she was and proud to be part of the city and telling us her story about all the different types of plants, what she was trying and and telling us about, you know, her past history with, you know, the Navajos and how they would dryland farm. And then, you know, telling us about like new types of plants that, you know, I didn't, I wasn't aware of. And I think that's a really good thing. Happiness Gardens has come such a long, long way since when I first moved here. And so I want to definitely thank you know, my councilmembers that have really spearheaded that. You know, Hull team and Councilmember Weaver and staff. You know, I was talking to Susan Bennett about the bees and just getting a really good understanding of, you know, what it takes for them to thrive and what they, how they deal with different types of chemicals. And so, you know, there's definitely something that Weaver just needs to work on as far as getting the word out about pesticides. Because they were losing some bees due to pesticides. But, you know, what an amazing space that Happiness Gardens is. And then I also got to an invite for the block party. And it's always amazing to talk, you know, to different people. I get asked all the time, you know, how do you like being in City Council? And my response is always, I love it. We have such an amazing council and staff that it, you know, I feel like we're always moving forward and we're doing good things for the city. And you know, Councilmember Hull team is, you know, when she says, you know, top five, that, we should really be proud of that. That is really something, top five. We do have an amazing city, amazing gardens and, you know, keep moving us forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am on the board for the Porchlight Family Justice Center and we have our Be the Light Benefit coming up on September 19th. So don't put your calendars away yet. Please add September 19th on it. At 6 o'clock, you can get tickets at porchlightfjc, familyjusticecenter.org. What Porchlight does is we support victims of violence in that sex trafficking, child abuse, sexual assault, domestic violence, victims of gun violence. And this is a place where we have over 25 nonprofits co-located in one place. So as a victim of violence, you go and speak with one of our navigators. You only have to tell your story once. You only have to be re-traumatized that one time to tell your story. And you don't have to drive around to several different places to get services because then our navigator goes and finds the services you need and brings them in the room. We also partner with over 75 different nonprofits throughout Jefferson County. So if you would like to come and support us at our Be the Light Benefit, go to porchlightfjc.org and get your tickets for September 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't usually write stuff down, but there's been a lot of stuff going on the last couple of weeks. I attended the Live Local event at Moonrise Gardens a couple of weeks ago. A really great event. It was really cool to see so many families with so many young kids. In fact, I walked in, I won't say which of the local org staff members I walked in, they were leading the baby shark dance, which was really cool. Really, really awesome. And then last week, I actually popped into the Maker Space and took one of the classes with Tyler. And it was really cool. Does a phenomenal job leading those classes. I actually did have the opportunity to clone myself a little bit on Saturday, just like Counselor Snell. My wife actually went and got one of her tattoos for the semicolon event. So thank you to Jefferson Center for doing that. And thank you for everybody who participated in that. Suicide does touch all of us and it actually touched my family this year. And it's a very rough thing and it's something that we need to definitely talk about. I want to thank Counselor Weaver for her hosting the large animal event at the Five Fridges Farms the other day and the really enjoyed the root beer floats as well. Those were amazing. And then the Chamber hosting the Wine Walk on 38th Avenue and helping support all the businesses out there. I didn't have an opportunity to do that because I did not, was not able to clone myself. But thank you to everybody who participated in that. And then this week on Thursday night, if you have an opportunity, local orgs is doing an Explore 44 event and explaining what that is at Anderson Park from 5:30 to 7. So thank you very much. And if you can find it, you should find it by at Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All the counselors, thank you for all the great information. Most of my thunder's already been taken. But I just want to roll over a couple of things. It was, one thing that we didn't mention was a really, a really great board and commission recognition event at Anderson Park over the last week or two. I want to thank staff and our Parks Department for putting that together. We had a great, great entertainment and a great feeling of being there. I want to thank Counselor Hull team for inviting me to Happiness Gardens and to meet Dr. Dwayne Goldman. He was a great great guy to have it there. And he's got, he's got so many things that we were talking about. We really hit it off. And I want to thank you and and really appreciate you bringing him to town. You know, Dr. Weaver hit it out of the park on Saturday, you know, with a large, a large animal rescue and Preparedness Program. So thank you for doing that. I think it was really impactful for our community. You don't know it until you need it. You need to be prepared. So I want to thank you for doing that. I want to thank Counselor Dozeman for bringing the plate tonight. We, you know, it's great to, it's great to have it here, but more than that, it's great to have all the people and volunteers that make that happen. So thank you. You know, please express our thanks to the folks that make that happen year after year. It's a great, great festival. I thought it was the best one yet myself. So even with, even without the booms in the sky. But you know, the rest of it was really great. You know, the thing that impresses me about our city is we have so many great things going on and people and great people that are doing them. So I want to thank the folks that really engage in our community. There's a lot going on and I hope you'll really be a part of it as you're able to learn more that's going on in our city. So we are going to, unless there is any more business come before council at our meeting tonight, we are going to adjourn and probably go right into our study session unless we need a break. But I think we will adjourn this meeting and move into our special study session. We'll be back here. Mr. Goff, we're back at study session next week here, right?
We are.
Very good.
Yes.
We will, we will adjourn this meeting and begin the next one momentarily. Thank you.
Yeah, be great. Okay. Lauren's, you ready to go? Why Lauren's, yeah. Well, she's pulling that up. Just as you all remember, we received a $2 million grant from from Congress and through the community. Yes, I'm sorry. Oh, you haven't opened. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yep, go ahead and open it. Sorry about that.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to open our special study session and we have two study items tonight. Item number one is naturally occurring affordable house, the NOAA program update. Item number two will be our tobacco products retail locations update. We have already taken public comment on items on the study session. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Goff.
Sorry, sorry about that. Jump ahead. But as I was saying, y'all remember, we received a $2 million grant from Congress for NOAA program, naturally occurring affordable housing. We've had at least one update from Terry Ware, our housing program manager. And we are here this night, tonight, to talk a little bit more specifics about how we plan on spending the money and get some direction and consensus from council. So just go ahead and turn it over to Terry.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council, Mayor. So I have a brief PowerPoint presentation. You have the memo detailing the program. And most of the presentation is really going to focus on sort of the background about naturally affordable housing. And then the latter part of the presentation, we'll talk a little bit more in specifics about the grant itself. So going to talk about the context, what is, what is naturally occurring affordable housing. Talk about the structure of a program and the components of a program and then talk about next steps related to that. So as Mr. Goff just mentioned, and most of you are aware, Wheat Ridge received $2 million from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, Economic Development Initiative through their Community Projects Fund. And what's unique about this particular grant is, you know, having worked at HUD for eight years, this has less strings than I've ever seen attached to any federal funds. There's no requirement that it focus on low and moderate income housing or individuals, which is amazing. There's no cap on administrative costs. There are only a few requirements. The use of the grant has to comply with administrative requirements of the federal government. Has to utilize the Buy America, Buy, Build America program. Has to comply with all environmental review requirements. And that's not as easy as it sounds. And then all funds must be obligated within six years of the execution of the grant agreement. And we've received a draft of the grant agreement. There's some additional paperwork that needs to occur, as many of you are aware. There is a continuing resolution to continue funding the federal government. That may have an impact on when this grant agreement is executed because most of the staff is non-critical. So we'll come to that at a later date. The environmental review requirements are probably the biggest, I won't say bugaboo, but biggest challenge in utilizing these dollars. And regardless of how we use them, and I've suggested further in the memo that we talked about utilizing partners. Any dollars that come in contact with those federal dollars are going to be required to the same requirements of the use of those federal dollars. Any partnership that we engage in has to abide by the same requirements that we abide by as the grantee and receiver of those funds. So you know, while there are very few strings attached, that doesn't make it an easy thing to do. So we're awaiting further detail on the grant agreement and additional paperwork. So back to the subject, what's naturally occurring affordable housing, most of you are already familiar with this, as you reviewed the Affordable Housing Strategy. Generally refers to housing that's rental housing that's affordable because of low rent or low market values. These unassisted rental buildings typically have lower rents because they're located in lower cost markets, of which Wheat Ridge is one. We'll talk about why that's the case. These properties typically are held by one owner for a long period of time and may not have an active mortgage. And we'll talk a little bit more about the profile of the ownership. And these properties don't receive significant capital investment. The units that we're talking about are not subsidized units. They're not part of any kind of Section 8 program. They don't get vouchers. These are just units that, you know, you drive through this community duplexes, triplexes, the eightplexes that you see. Those typically are probably not Public Housing Authority or subsidized projects. And so that's really the focus of what this program is designed to approach or target. So Wheat Ridge has approximately 15,000 housing units, has more affordable rental locations in the Denver area than most other sub-communities in Denver. Of those, approximately 4,000 plus or minus are multifamily units. They have a vacancy rate of about 7%, which, you know, is good for developers because anytime you get below 7% to 6%, that means that there's market demand out there. And of course, given the high cost of housing in general, the high cost of interest rates right now, still, you know, there are a number of populations who are being pushed into those rental units, making competition pretty tough. And then $62,000, $62,000 yearly income required for the average rent, which is about $1,500 a month. So I know there's a lot of information on this slide. You know, there are two things that are key, I think, from this slide. One, Wheat Ridge has a smaller proportion than our adjacent communities in terms of large apartment complexes. Second point on this particular slide is that there are large and larger percentages each year of single-family homes that are becoming rental homes. And I think there are a number of factors leading to that, the inability to maintain homes because of higher interest rates, et cetera. So getting into the profile of the typical property owner, I was surprised by this number. The majority are retired or self-employed. The second bar, I assume you can see the presentation. Corporate entities are full-time investors and those are private equity who's getting more and more into this field. And REITs, real estate investment trusts, who are getting more and more into this field. And the REITs have become a real problem because small individuals are, you know, looking for investment opportunities that they don't understand the risk and necessity of maintenance and operation of these facilities. So that's become a real problem from an investment standpoint. But the real point of this slide is that 70% of most multifamily properties are owned by retired, self-employed or part-time individuals or families. And so that's really a market that has some real constraints on their operation. Most of these individuals own these properties primarily for rental income or retirement income. Or they're looking to assuage capital gains impacts for affordable housing, family security, primary residence in some cases. The majority of these units, 60% or greater. in some cases. The majority of these units, 60% or greater, are in good or fair, uh, status, but many need substantial work and will need it soon. So, relative to main property maintenance and practices, and this information comes from Turner Center, uh, out of Berkeley, California, uh, they, it's a national survey, and so, not specific to Colorado, not specific to Wheat Ridge, but just gives you some general background about some of the challenges associated with rental housing. Uh, in terms of the property maintenance issues, which is what the program is really, uh, trying to focus on, I think the key element here is when you look at the yellow bar, which serious cash flow problems, even for minor work, that still comprises a pretty significant challenge for many property owners. And when you get into deferred maintenance particularly, or major maintenance, cash flow is the major concern or challenge that these property owners have. So, in terms of the programs that we looked at across the country, they really comprise two components. Some include education assistance with grants, property management training, financial planning, et cetera. Because once again, given the population profile, the majority of these people are buying these properties for retirement purposes. They're not property managers, they're not real estate experts, they're not real estate investors. They're doing this because they see it as a profitable way or fairly easy way to provide long-term income. The second portion of most of these programs really focus on low-interest loans. So, there are two, you know, I want to underline the low-interest parts. Because you would ask yourself, well, why don't you just go to a bank to get a loan? Well, there are a couple of reasons. One, most of them don't have a lot of collateral to begin with, and so the collateral tends to be the property. The second is for loans, you know, between $1 to $3 million, the cost of doing business with the bank is greater than the return on the cost that the bank will receive from the loan. And so, as a result, many banks don't, as individuals or individual entities, don't really play in this marketplace. Some of the examples I cited in the memo, there are collaborations of, uh, banks, I think one I mentioned, uh, in Chicago, where there are 45 banks that have invested in that. Here locally, uh, Colorado Gives has actually created the Bring It Home Fund, which, uh, has taken in, um, submissions of dollars from banks. City of Lakewood is a municipal participant in that, private individuals, private equity, et cetera, to create a $15 million loan fund that really begins to focus on this particular problem. So, focus on non-subsidized small properties operated by moderate income individuals and families. This is a keynote of most of those programs. And once again, it's to try and push aside private equity or the corporate owners like Lincoln Properties, et cetera, or private equity, uh, who play in this arena. Allowable activities typically include functional upgrades, improved energy efficiency or efficiency, rather, financial stabilization and acquisition. And then, of course, these units must be affordable to populations at 60 to 120% average median income. So, as we were evaluating these programs and thinking about what would it look like for Wheat Ridge to create its own NOAA program, there were several things that we took into account. The biggest hurdle or challenge is the administration of these programs. Because you're doing loans primarily or providing some financial assistance, there needs to be a significant amount of underwriting that occurs to identify the risk associated with these loans, as well as create a method for collection and recapture, you know, if necessary. And so, that requires some level of sophistication and staff support that we may be challenged by. The second component is educational and technical assistance. Because there are grants, there are programs out there, there are banks, there are lenders who do operate in this arena, but most of these small property owners may be either unaware or not have the sophistication to put together a loan package or grant package. So, a lot of the programs focus on that. The second consideration, we thought, particularly with the $2 million that we've received, is you have a couple of choices. You can get that money out the door as fast as possible and, and two or three years from now, you know, have a few units that you've supported, but have no money to continue to reinvest because this problem isn't going to go away. I mean, over the long term, particularly given the age of housing in Wheat Ridge, the problem is probably going to increase in terms of maintenance issues. The other consideration is why not maximize your return on investment? So, one of the things, as an example, the Colorado Give program does is it takes those loans and the repayment of those loans and puts it back into the same program. So, at least they have recurring funds that can be replenished and funds that then can be reinvested in properties. And then, the last consideration is how do you maximize the number of properties that remain affordable? And that's a challenge. And the affordable housing strategy, one of the cost factors it mentioned was that in their estimation, typically rehab would cost $75,000 to $100,000 per unit. And that's because you're going to be upgrading primarily plumbing facilities, the bath, the kitchens, and those are expensive. Uh, to take an example, the new units that were constructed by, uh, with the partnership with, uh, Foothills Regional were about $400,000 per unit. That's new construction cost. So, you know, where do you want to play? Do you want to, you know, it's much more effective to talk about trying to maintain existing rental units than it is to think about building new. And so, you know, those were some of the considerations that we've thought about and want to discuss with council tonight because, you know, there are a variety of options and answers. So, that's a long way of getting to our staff recommendations. Given the complexity of the NOAA program, what we would like to do is seek partners to expand the capacity and expertise involved in implementing the program and minimizing the long-term administrative obligations of the city. There are a number of partners, both within Wheat Ridge, as I said, Foothills Regional Housing, uh, Colorado Gives Foundation, there are others, Mercy Housing, Habitat for Humanity, that are in the larger Denver region who also play in this arena. And all of them would be adequate partners and have expertise that we don't presently have. Select those partners whose practices and policies align with the city's goals to preserve existing affordable housing units through investment and capacity building, and invest funds and entities and activities which generate some reasonable return on that investment so that the fund can continue to operate. So, in terms of how would we put together a request for proposals or solicitation for letters of interest from outside partners, we think there are six criteria that we've identified here. The one, most obvious one, is these projects need to be located in Wheat Ridge. Two, they need to preserve existing affordable units. While new construction may be a viable alternative, really given the cost factor, this seems like the more reasonable approach. Projects with higher proportions of affordable units and affordability should be prioritized. Rehabilitation, renovation, including structural, system, energy efficiency, and exterior improvements and acquisitions are all eligible activities. On this particular point, we had investigated the idea about just looking at rehab and renovation, but there are a number of operators, Foothills as an example, Foothills that, as an example, that just recently acquired the, um, the Manor Project over on West 38th. I, there are two buildings there, and I'm not sure if they acquired both or just one. Uh, and that, that came about just sort of serendipitously. A broker called them, a realtor called them and said, hey, you know, this project's coming up for sale. Are you guys interested? So, they had to scramble to pull together funds to acquire the property, uh, without a lot of background information or due diligence there was exercised. And those opportunities are going to continue to arise, and we'd like to be in a position to partner with someone such as Foothills to be able to play in that arena as well. Units must remain affordable for a period of five to 10 years, depending upon the level of funding. And then administrative costs of the entity are limited to 5% of the project fund or administrative costs. And that's to try and make sure that the majority of our dollars that are invested really are going to do exactly what we identified. As I said, the main, uh, constraint from the grant itself is simply the idea that it must be spent in six years, and I don't think there's going to be any problem with that, and that they must comply with all environmental laws. That may be a problem just in terms of the timing because at least my experience going through this process, sometimes environmental review can take 12 months to 18 months. So, uh, you know, trying to be conscious of that and work with partners to understand the limitations on the use of these funds, as well as the fact that there are federal dollars. So, all federal requirements would apply to the use of these funds and any funds that were associated with them. So, that may be a constraint that may be a real challenge for some, some investors. Uh, next steps, submit a scope of work and complete the contracting process with HUD in order to receive the funds. Begin drafting of requests for letters of interest, engage the market interest, evaluate those proposals, negotiate with the respondents, and then provide updates to City Council as we move through that process. And then, other activity that we're presently engaged in, we've hired a consultant to verify the MLOF fee option. If you remember, when we talked about inclusionary, uh, housing, it's on in, uh, our last study session, our study session, so, some time ago. One of the requests of council was to make sure that the MLOF fee, which is required by state law, doesn't push development somewhere else, doesn't have unintended consequences upon the cost of development, but does provide a source of income for the city to continue to invest in affordable housing. And then, eventually, a discussion with council about the Affordable Housing Fund, other uses, the role of City Council and the role of the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority. So, that completes my presentation. I'd be happy
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the, um, when you were talking about we have to keep the administrative expenses down to 5%, does that mean that what we would be doing is like a, a cost-plus contract? Like this cost-plus, you could get the 5% for, for those types of, for those types of projects?
We haven't worked out the details. I think it's just the idea that we want to make sure that the majority of funds that we invest go to the, to the activity and not to the administrative component of it. I'm, you know, so, sorry, as, as we take a look at the proposals and letters of interest and negotiate with different parties, at that time, you know, we'll evaluate that. But it was basically just a cap for ourselves. Typically, most federal programs, uh, like CBG require you to put a cap of 5% of administrative costs. So, we thought that was, you know, purely reasonable rule, but, you know, we may come back and say that that doesn't seem reasonable based upon what we heard from various interested parties.
And then, you had said that the, um, the funds need to be spent within six years.
They need to be obligated within six years.
Allegated within six years. And, and once the initial allocation, if we do, um, have an account kind of like, um, like Colorado Gives does, where we're, we end up loaning the money out or, you know, and then it comes back into us. Once the money comes back into us, then at that point, it's already been allocated the one time, so it...
That's correct.
Okay, great.
Yeah, at that point, in most federal programs, they would be identified as program income. But, once again, with this particular grant, there are no such requirements that identify, you know, what you do with the return on the investment.
Additional questions? Uh, Council, hold team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for the presentation. Um, I actually, I have a question. There was a slide, uh, kind of earlier in your presentation that was about Wheat Ridge-specific housing. Um, and I just noticed in it, it just mentioned 80033. Is the data they used for that just from that zip code, or did you actually use our municipal boundaries?
I don't know. I'll have to go back, I'd have to go back and take a look.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the slide number because I wasn't counting slides.
So, there were a couple of slides. Um, I want to say, uh, there was a, uh, several bar graphs on one slide.
Yeah.
Most of the information, uh, that we included in that slide came from either two sources. It came from the, uh, updated NRS that was done in 2019 that CCB is updating, so that information is still current. And then, uh, the other data source was, uh, the American Community Survey, 2022, uh, census information. So...
Okay. I'm just, I'm curious, just because there, when we incorporate, I mean, the slide, actually, the little text on it said just the zip code, 80033, and...
Oh, I see where, I, I see the slide. Current Wheat Ridge snapshot, market snapshot, quarter one, 2024. Uh, 80033 zip code. Yes, I see it there.
Okay. I think it's important to just note that we have many, many zip codes in Wheat Ridge, and, and I think the reflection of our, our market would be impacted by inclusion. I mean, not significantly, but...
Well, the source for that particular graph was CoStar, which is a, uh, real, uh, real T, uh, data, data program in operation. So, I can't verify.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just making note that it's, the one zip code is not reflective of the whole, the whole city. Um, I'm curious if the city has contemplated, uh, how this would align with our requirements under House Bill 241313, um, in terms of affordable housing and access to transit, um, and if that's a consideration for prioritization of, of our investments in the community?
I'm sorry, didn't quite hear the question.
So, Dola just rejected us actually today to participate in a group that helps establish the methodology by which we're holding municipalities accountable to 1313. So, we probably don't know enough yet, but that can certainly be a part of our consideration criteria for any partnership that it further other potential goals or, um, obligations that we have.
Yes, I think, I think that's important since that's a process we're going to be engaging in and, um, accountable to. So, I think with this type of catalytic investment, I think we should be, um, looking at alignment with, with that. And then, also, I'm curious with our Prop 123 funds, if these, these investments would count towards our pledge for affordable housing under that.
Yes, so if these funds result in a unit becoming deed restricted within the reporting period for one, um, Prop 123, then yes, those units would count.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I just, I'll just share that it was, uh, two other things. I attended Dr. Cog's, uh, board working session this last Wednesday, and they were, uh, presenting more of their regional housing assessment, but, uh, the draft is completed. And they've really identified housing need actually in that 80 to, um, 100% AMI. So, I was excited to see that we're including that in, in our AMI. And, um, and then I just was also excited to see that Brothers Redevelopment is one of the eligible entities under this. They do a lot of really important work, and I, I'm very aware of my aging neighbors. As much as I love up here for us to be talking about how are we attracting new people moving here, we have a lot of, uh, seniors who are aging in place in our community and really need to be able to either, you know, move within Wheat Ridge or have reinvestments in where they're living so that they, you know, have a quality of life that they deserve. So, just when I, um, we will do a good process on this, but I am excited to see Brothers as eligible. So, that's what I have. Thank you.
Additional questions?
I, I had one. What, what staff impact might we expect this to have on our, on our, uh, internal permanent staff? I mean, is this, do we look for more FTEs that are, that are going to happen out of this program, or?
We haven't really had that discussion. I think, uh, the fact that there are administrative costs that can be, that are associated with the grant, they can be covered by the grant. If there were a need for additional staff resources, utilizing the grant to do that certainly is a knowledgeable activity. So...
But I, I think our primary goal is to keep that very limited.
Okay.
Um, and that's why we're looking at these partnerships, um, because it could become very, um, internally, um, taxing if, if we were trying to run a program that, um, there's partners out there that do it professionally and we don't. So, that's our goal, is to keep the staff leveled down as much as possible.
Yeah, part, part of the challenge might be where you might get three applications for loans, and then nothing might happen for several months. So, that person, you know, would be sitting around twiddling their thumbs. So...
Exactly. I mean, I think that's, that's good. And then also that we don't, um, get a program that has a, has a good level of funding to it now, but doesn't, doesn't have a long tail to it, and we get stuck in a place where we don't have the cover. Uh, no, Council, hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and to that point around staffing, um, when I was on the board for, um, Local Works, but it was then Wheat Ridge 2020, we utilized almost $3 million in CBDG funds in rehabbing houses in Wheat Ridge. Um, and, uh, and they were income restricted also. We did that with one staff and then with a, a pretty dedicated, um, volunteer team. So, that might be something that we could potentially consider also. Um, we know we have our housing authority. We do have some expertise on there, maybe not, we might need to kind of do some, some trimming and do some outreach if we wanted to use that, but I think that we have some opportunity there, too.
Thank you. Additional discussion, questions? Uh, Council Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first off, what is our AMI?
What we're proposing here is between 60 to 120%.
I, I, what is the number? What's the dollar figure?
Uh, approximately, mm, 60%, I'm trying to remember from the AHS. It's about 63,900 up to, uh, 149, about 120, 120.
It's about 63,900 up to 149, about 120, 129.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Then, I'm thinking more in terms of outcomes here. And the chart that's in the staff report here on distribution of rental occupied housing lists single family and then duplex and then 10 or more. And it seems like the discussion kind of shines more on the multi-unit, 10 or more, as sort of a way to kind of get this in moving. But when you look at the numbers, you add up the single family and duplexes, and you've got about the same amount of rental units. So, and I'm, I would like to know a little bit more about how that would look. How would we get the single-family rental property owners? How would we get them involved? Typically, as the note says, it is a, maybe a retired person, maybe a single person, or, in just a quick check of some of the duplexes and homes around my house that I know are rented, many of those are owned by trusts, and they're owned by out-of-town corporations. So, there's probably a nice mix there. But it's still, to me, the big question is how do you get them involved?
I think that's going to be a challenge. One, you know, as we were talking about what kind of program structure you establish, I think it became pretty apparent that we have limited resources. And so, what I'd say is, the partners that we engage with, it would be their responsibility to talk about marketing, to talk about outreach. But I still think that's going to be a challenge for that particular market. You could say, from an efficiency standpoint, the larger number of units probably makes more sense. Just from a construction standpoint, you know, the challenge in housing is that when you have scattered site development, such as many housing authorities operate, it's more expensive, it's more complex, it's more time-consuming. Whereas if you have the same number of units, let's say you have 10 single-family units and you have one building that has 10 units in it, it's going to be much easier and streamlined to do that one building than it is going to be those 10 individual units. That doesn't mean that these folks would be excluded from a program. But I think that's a discussion, and that's a concern. You know, as we're talking to partners, we can certainly bring them up. Brothers Redevelopment, as an example, focuses very much so on single-family rehab. So, there may be partners out there that do that, but it is a more complex process.
Real quickly to follow that up, I would think that the challenge here, at least initially, would be some sort of a, some sort of a way to pull together, I'm not even thinking of a database, but just some way to identify the different housing options. I mean, one house here is owner occupied, and they reside, and then another one here is rented, so...
So, I tried poking that bear. So, I started with the Jefferson County assessor's records and contacted Jefferson County on several occasions to try and figure out if there was a query that you could do through their database that'll identify these properties. And I got nowhere with that. I talked to a few realtors to see if there was an organization of property owners, particularly small, multifamily property owners. There isn't one in the Denver metro area. So, then, you know, had some discussions internally about how would we market it? Would it be through newspaper advertising? Or would we send out flyers to property owners? So, all those are still, you know, items or approaches for consideration. But, once again, it's not an easy approach. As I mentioned in the memo, one of the things that Denver has done is to license or attempt to license multifamily property owners. And part of the reason for doing that is because there isn't a database that exists that talks about the condition, the location, the property owner, et cetera. So, you know, it's difficult. Most of the other programs that we looked at, what they did was publish solicitations in the newspaper through their, you know, economic development programs, through their community development programs, leaflets, knocking on doors, a fairly extensive approach, which is what San Francisco did, to try and bring those owners of those properties in and then work with them to educate them and provide financial assistance.
I completely agree. And I believe that that would be not only labor-intensive, but very capital-intensive, just trying to spread the net wide enough to make it worthwhile. But if you're able to get over that hill, I think you'd see probably a lot of interest.
Sure. Well, that's why we're hoping, you know, by bringing in partners, by working collaboratively with other organizations that are in this arena, that, you know, it'll raise both the visibility as well as our exposure to this.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And a little bit more on the topic of detached single-family homes. You know, to rehab a detached single-family home, the price is much more expensive than to rehab attached apartments, which could potentially share a boiler system, an air handler system, things like that. So, do, have we, you know, I personally feel like we want to get the most bang for our buck that we can. And I see that happening in the multi-unit structures. But do we have kind of like a, do we have a philosophy that, like a guiding philosophy, where we want to make sure we're not doing mission creep? You know, like where it's like, you know, our philosophy is we want to get our most bang for our buck and get the most affordable units we can out there? What's our mission, then, that follows up that philosophy so that we can keep pointing back to that?
Well, one of the criteria that we've listed in the memo is the idea about getting the largest number of affordable units for the large, longest period of time of affordability. So, that's definitely one of the criteria, and we'll evaluate that. So, you know, two, an owner owns two single-family homes versus an owner who owns a multiplex unit, I think our priority would be that owner, to your point, of the multiplexed unit, not excluding the others, because there may be circumstances that really drive that. Maybe there's, you know, a need for ADA accessibility, which is, you know, better provided for a family situation or others, you know, in that single-family home. But, you know, as we work through this program and talk to our partners, we'll be refining the criteria a bit more and update you through this process before we, you know, start putting money on the street.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
To add to that real quick, if I could, just keep in mind that this won't be our only affordable housing program. This is just one potentially, as Terry mentioned in his memo. You know, we're hoping to build up our housing funds over the years with fees in lieu and other grants and opportunities. And we're going to be looking at other programming opportunities, and that could address single-family, and more than the know-it-will.
Any additional questions or discussion on this item? Mr. Ware, thank you for bringing this to us tonight. Great, great presentation. I think it's...
Just maybe consensus on the general direction that Mr. Ware presented.
Okay, so we've listed out, you know, some goals and some strategies. And do we have a favorable consensus to move this forward in this direction?
Yeah, and I think that we probably have to, right? It's the state law, so we'll have to do that anyway, but yes.
Yeah, we, okay.
All right.
Yes. Looks like we have consensus to move forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to agenda item number two on our special study session. This is the tobacco products retailer locations. Mr. Dahl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to turn it straight to Mr. Dahl.
Okay, thank you. The council member Hoppe asked to have this brought to us. I did a little research. You have a memo in the packet that identifies the structure here, which is that, you know, tobacco sales is not, is allowed in all the retail zone districts in the city. So, the issue here is really licensing, not use, in that sense. And I think it's probably important to have that context. But, yeah, in 2020, and I think in 2021, there were council study sessions on this. And the most recent, I think, was, the one I have is 2021, because that's when this particular section, I've got the book here, the book here, that shows when the code was amended. And it was in April of 2021. And that gave rise to the following problem. The rule is that there can't be tobacco retailers within 1,000 feet of a school. But at the time, there were retailers operating within 1,000 feet of a school. And the council said, we want to allow those to continue to operate. And that's what this rather convoluted section does. It says, gee, if you were in, lawfully in business on the effective date of ordinance 1710, Series 2021, you can continue in business despite the fact that you're within 1,000 feet of a school. And you can continue in business if a new school gets built next to you. You know, you're somewhere out there, and there's no school, and a school gets built, and you're within 1,000 feet. Shouldn't be punished for that. Ally looked carefully at the videos from the various study sessions on this. And it now appears to us that the study session consensus was more than what was done and was beyond saying that if you're in business, you can continue. It meant to say the property, if it's got a tobacco retail license, continues to be eligible to receive. You know, if it gets sold and someone else wants to get a retail license in that location, they have to satisfy the other licensing requirements, pay the fee, et cetera. But the intention was that the exception to the 100,000-foot rule extend to the property such that if I own that business, I can sell it to someone else and realize the value of the fact that I've got a licensed operation. No different, really, when you think about it, than liquor licensees. The new successor licensee still has to pay the fee, background check, it's a lot trickier for liquor. But it's the same kind of principle that they've got an operation in place there. That didn't happen, as far as we can tell. And it's clear, it didn't happen in this ordinance from 2021. What you have in the packet is language which I put together that makes that happen. And I'll admit, I made it happen because I thought, okay, that's a new, that's what we want to do now. I now understand that that was the original intention. But the same language would accomplish that intention. And you see, I've added, it's pretty simple. It's saying, okay, if you were lawfully in business on that date, you or your successor and interest by purchase at the same location, then, and if you're ineligible, if any of these categories you're ineligible, you are nevertheless eligible. That's the convoluted nature of this subsection, which I, we could rewrite holistically, but at this point, I'd rather not. This solution here does, I think, what the original consensus was to accomplish. And that's my, that's my story. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions of council on this? Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't necessarily have a question, but because we're not going to a motion, I do have discussion. I know that our intent was not to penalize small businesses. And one thing we need to keep in mind is, when someone owns a small business, like that is you, that is your livelihood. And you put all of your time and effort into that. And for you to be able to say, okay, I'm ready to retire from this business, then your equity in that business is from all the blood, sweat, and tears you put into it. I own an HVAC company and an electrical company. And if I were to go to sell my electrical company, and somebody said, that's fine, but you can't sell light switches, can't install or sell light switches, then that really wouldn't be beneficial to the new purchaser. And so, I appreciate Council Dahl to add this language. I hope that I'll get support from council to be able to move this forward. You know, small businesses are really kind of the heart and soul of our community. And I want to make sure that we are not making it harder on them. There are a lot of things, a lot of things that small businesses have already have to do that make it kind of difficult to be a small business anyways, so...
Thank you, Counselor Holte.
Thank you, Mayor. The question I have is, in the ordinance, it had stated youth-oriented facility. But in this, it omits that, and it only says school. Was the intent that it would cover youth-oriented facilities?
Good. Can you speak up? I'm just really having trouble hearing you.
Yeah. So, as I, as I look at, you know, right under the issue, it says operating with 1,000 feet of youth-oriented facility, which in parentheses, schools, parks, recreation facilities. And that's what was in the past version of the ordinance. But then, there's references on the, on the next page where it says, who becomes ineligible to receive renewal license due to the creation of a new school? And I wanted to clarify, is this just, are we changing this just specifically for school? Or can we change that to youth-oriented facility?
Thanks, fair question. I think in looking at sort of the structure of the code section here, it's intending to talk about schools and youth-oriented facilities. And then, it kind of defaults to shorthand, using the word school throughout. But, letter C talks about, the subsection just above this one talks about schools and youth-oriented facilities, establishes the 1,000-foot limit. And then, letter D creates the exception. And I'd be happy to hear council discussion on it. But I think that the exception, when it just narrows it to school, probably inadvertent, or, you know, was using school in the generic sense. We can certainly, and I'm happy to do it in the revision of subsection D, because subsection C doesn't need any revision, says youth-oriented in schools. And I can add that to the new language for subsection D. But I think you're right. I think the intention, when you look at the whole works, was that we're talking about schools in the generic.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Hoppe.
Could we, could we perhaps say something like, due to the creation of youth-oriented spaces as described in subsection C?
Yes, yes, I think we can. We'll probably need a couple of different sort of references back to C to make that happen. But let me, I won't do it in front of you here, but let me tinker with the language to, I see that the issue we need to solve. I can do that.
Additional discussion on this issue, questions? Do we have consensus to move this concept forward? And having Mr. Dahl work in the language that he needs to sort of include such as schools, parks, recreational facilities, move that forward? We do, does that, does that answer your questions?
Terrific.
Does?
Yes, it does. I've got what I need. You'll see it next meeting.
We'll schedule this for first reading, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see. We probably have staff reports. Mr. Dahl.
No other staff reports.
No staff reports, okay. Any further elected officials matters? It's like we're getting to the end here. We have a study session coming next week. Thank you all for coming. Please drive safely and carefully through our city. Counselor Holtein.
I totally forgot earlier that this Saturday, from noon to 2, there is a crosswalk painting event as part of our Safe Routes to Parks. And I hope everyone who loves to paint streets like I do will volunteer to come out and be part of that. This is an exciting opportunity to really improve safety for kiddos who are accessing schools and parks in our neighborhood. So, noon to 2 on Saturday, and it is at, oh my gosh, thank you, 47th and Miller. That's all I got.
Okay. And if you're going to say that, then I'm going to say earlier that morning on September 14, at 9 o'clock, we'll have coffee with the mayor at Vannola's Italian Restaurant. If you'd like to come and have a cup of coffee with us and some great conversation, we'd love to have you. There's no more, no more items to come before our study session. We will stand adjourned, and thank you.